County Board of Arlington County is now in session. Welcome everyone to our May 25, 2020 special meeting of the Arlington County Board. We are now poised to enter into Phase One of reopening with COVID. And there are some amendments that we need to make under our continuity of operations ordinance. And this is to help some of our businesses ease into this next, on this next phase. And I will turn it over to our manager, Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. So this afternoon, as you alluded to, Madam Chair, the, actually, the governor just announced that he would be acceding to the elected officials request in Northern Virginia. So Friday at 12:01 a.m., moving into Phase One of the reopening related to COVID. So this afternoon, we have before you, we're going to make a presentation about how we think we're going to go about handling applications by restaurants and for temporary outdoor seating areas. And the main presentation today will be given by Anthony Fusarelli. He's also going to be assisted by, as needed with, by Jill Hunger, who's with Arlington Economic Development. And I spent a lot of time over the last five or six days working with our business improvement districts and our alliances and restaurant owners. Also Captain Mike Rowling with the Arlington County Police Department, who works very closely with the Arlington Restaurant Initiative, who's been out working with all our restaurant owners. And Hui Wong, who's with the Department of Environmental Services, who will explain to you the intricate, the intricacies of trying to manage sidewalks and also curb space right next to the sidewalks. After we get done with the presentation, we welcome your questions. And if the board moves ahead with approval, at some point after the presentation, we'd talk a little bit about the administrative process over the next few days. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fusarelli.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good afternoon, members of the board.
It's nice to see you again, Mr. Fusarelli.
It's great to see you all. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and bring up my PowerPoints. All right. So this is Anthony Fusarelli, for the record, with Community Planning Housing and Development. On behalf of a large interdepartmental team that has been supporting this effort, I will be providing, along with a few others, the staff report for today's item related to the county's approach to temporary outdoor seating areas. This afternoon's presentation will be organized according to the structure depicted herein. After providing a brief overview of the Governor's Forward Virginia Plan and its most applicable parts to temporary open space areas, or what we have begun calling TOSSAs, we will outline a series of key questions and issues for their application in Arlington. Next, we will cover the staff recommendation and associated details of our proposed approach to TOSSAs. And finally, we will conclude with a few remarks on timeline and next steps. In the last several weeks, Virginia has released guidelines for Phase One of the Forward Virginia Plan to safely and gradually ease public health restrictions while containing the spread of COVID-19. When we see the types of trends and measures that are listed to the left, Northern Virginia will be ready to move into Phase One. And as the manager has noted, that will happen as we transition from Thursday night into Friday morning. Many aspects of Phase One will look similar to Phase Zero, but there will be some reopening of businesses with strict safety restrictions. As part of Phase One, the Governor and Commonwealth have established a detailed set of guidelines for all business sectors, which are available for review on Virginia's website via the link listed here. The best practices noted for all business sectors relating to physical distancing, enhanced cleaning and disinfection, as well as enhanced workplace safety, are all available. In addition to these guidelines, Virginia has also published requirements and guidelines associated with specific business sectors. Most pertinent to today's discussion are Virginia's requirements and guidelines associated with restaurant and beverage services. In addition to continuing to offer takeout and delivery options, as they have been doing, in Phase One, restaurants can offer dine-in service only that occurs in outdoor spaces and also, and also only when adhering to a list of additional requirements. Among the detailed list of mandatory requirements that the state has identified, several key ones are highlighted that I'll highlight here include that occupancy must be limited to no more than 50% of the lowest occupancy load on the Certificate of Occupancy, if available, while also maintaining a minimum of six feet of physical distancing between all individuals as much as possible. Providing a minimum of six feet between parties and spacing must also allow for physical distancing from areas outside of the facility's controls, meanings areas such as public sidewalks. Parties must be no greater than 10 patrons, or they must not be, multiple parties must not be seated at one table unless with, unless marked with six-foot divisions. And many other requirements apply. These are just a few to highlight this afternoon. Collectively, the spacing and occupancy limit requirements for outdoor-only dining will certainly limit the amount of customers that restaurant and beverage services can serve. In recognition of this, the Virginia Alcoholic Beverage Control Authority, or ABC, created an accelerated process for receiving requests for outdoor dining areas. As such, the authority will allow temporary approval of outside, outside dining rooms or areas only until the expiration of Executive Order 61 and 62, or unless otherwise revoked sooner, under a specific set of conditions as set forth in its opinion, referred to as Topic 16. For a business to seek the approval of a temporary outdoor seating area, or TOSA, it must receive written approval for that area from the locality where the business is located first, and that's a requirement as part of their application to ABC. Among other additional requirements, the authority will also require that the area be used for selling and consuming alcohol occur only within the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m., unless further limited by the locality. There should be no entertainment in these areas. There should be no sharing or co-mingling of these areas across various licensees, and adequate chairs and tables must be provided. With the newly created process for TOSSAs established by the Commonwealth, the county was presented with an opportunity with some inherent challenges. So in considering these options over the past several days, the county's approach remained focused on the key objective of considering potential regulatory flexibility for business activities affected by Phase One in ways that continue to provide safe environments, ensures physical distancing to the extent possible, and supports Arlington businesses. And this afternoon, we'll be speaking specifically about restaurants and bars. So in keeping our eye on that objective, as an interagency team, we had thoughtful and a lot of discussion about a series of questions outlined here. Ultimately, we determined early on that the county should allow some form of TOSSAs during Phase One, and that the process to do so should be administrated, given the amount of time our use permit process would otherwise entail for managing TOSSAs on public property. For obvious reasons, we did not in balance find it appropriate to be collecting fees for this type of application. We generally decided that similar standards should be applied to TOSSAs on both public and private properties, however, recognizing that the process should differ a little bit between the two of them. And when considering whether TOSSAs should be considered on parking lots and sidewalks, we agree this should conserve, this should in fact occur. Regarding streets, we believe there may be opportunities for TOSSAs in parking lanes, especially where more physical substantial parklet is proposed. But I think the emphasis here will be on using, where used, parking lanes will be used for pedestrian circulation as an alternative to pedestrian travel along sidewalks. Finally, with respect to rooftops, while existing rooftops are part of the restaurant and may count as outdoor dining during Phase One, from Virginia's perspective, as such, they do not need to go through the TOSA process. However, if restaurants are interested in creating new rooftop dining areas, that also would not be created as a TOSA and instead should go through the conventional county processes as an extension of the restaurant use. At this time, I'll turn it over to Jill Hunger to speak briefly about our recent consultations with the business community.
Great. Thank you, Anthony. As the manager pointed out and mentioned previously, I've had the opportunity to reach out to several of our business community partners during this time and soliciting both their thoughts and ideas around this. And many of them have shared their comments to the county board and the county manager. Additionally, the county has received valuable input from its restaurants, and many were via the relationships that have been established through the ARI, also heard from the Chamber of Commerce and a variety of just individual business proprietors. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. So just some brief zoning background as it relates to outdoor cafes and similar areas. In the traditional sense of the term, outdoor cafes are permitted in Arlington only as accessory uses to the main use of a property as a restaurant. And as such, they must be adjacent to it, either on private property or public sidewalks. And then all outdoor cafes are subject to zoning ordinance section 12524. Outdoor cafes on private property with no public easements do not currently require use permit. However, those within the public right-of-way or on a public easement area always conventionally require use permit approval by the county board and the process associated with that. Given the process for obtaining use permit for outdoor cafes, it was our discussion among the staff team and with the consideration of the current circumstances, that the use permits approach to considering outdoor cafes, temporary outdoor cafes on public space or in right-of-way was not really feasible or recommended as the best fit for this situation. So as such, our recommendation here will be highlighted in seven parts, and then will be supported by additional detail. But to start with, staff is recommending that the county board amend its continuity of government ordinance to authorize the county manager to administratively process and approve TOSSAs, and to the extent there are accompanying permits that go along with those, to address those as well. We discussed that we will not be charging applicants for TOSSAs proposals, and we are working on finalizing the details of a basic application form and process as we speak. We'll speak further about the distinction between the process for private property and public property TOSSAs. And in all instances, we will be endeavoring a rapid review of applications so that applicants could, could have their written authority and proceed with their ABC process. Importantly, placards must be visibly posted at the TOSA locations with key details to inform both enforcement staff as well as information for customers. We are working to develop a concise set of guidelines or standards for best practices and helping those think about designing their TOSSAs. And only where needed, the accompanying permits would be handled and considered as part of the overall workflow. And importantly, these are temporary permits. We will, they will be valid until the county chooses to terminate them. They will also be subject to periodic review and are revocable at any time, either all at once or on a case-by-case basis. In developing our recommendation, we kept in mind the fact that TOSSAs, as seen here, can take many different forms, whether they're occupying surface parking lots on private property, whether they're occupying space on Arlington sidewalks, or whether or not there are physical parklets incorporated into the right-of-way, as shown in the lower right, via a Roseland bid demonstration parklet project. And we had spoken previously to rooftops, not considered part of TOSSAs per se, but in this environment, they would be available for outdoor dining. As part of the application, we would be looking for a certain level of detail in the diagram that would allow for staff, useful staff review of the proposal. Some of the details to be included are listed here and would include showing any proposed pedestrian bypass routes, bypass routes, as well as parking restrictions being requested. Once approved, they will be permitted, there'll be a permit and/or TOSA placard generated that should be posted visibly at the site, visible to all, and listing essential information about the TOSA, such as the name of the restaurant, the expiration date, address, capacity limit, and date and signature of the approval. When we get into the approvals process for TOSSAs on private versus public property, the staff recommendation includes, for private property, once the application is submitted to the county, we would acknowledge receipt. There would be some sort of email or correspondence sent to the applicant issuing a temporary approval. That should constitute the written authority of Arlington that would then enable the applicant to move on to its Virginia ABC process. And once it gets its application into ABC, our understanding is that they could commence the use at that time. For public property, given sort of the competing demands and the balancing act, we will be trying to strike between all uses relevant to the public right-of-way or public space. We will endeavor to complete a rapid review of the, of the proposal and of the application. Upon successful review of that application and the county's approval of the TOSA, the applicant would then have the written authority of Arlington to proceed with its ABC license application. Not to get into the details, but the application intake and approvals process will be modeled largely after our current means of intake for administrative change requests. This has been a recent sort of innovation over the past several months, where we now have the means of intaking administrative change requests electronically. So we will be creating a webpage for TOSSAs. We will be establishing an email address where TOSSAs can be sent, TOSA applications can be sent to, and staff will begin sort of the intake and review of them. We will have additional information posted here as far as requirements, frequently asked questions, and other information, including points of contact. The county manager will be the approving authority on these TOSSAs. That signature will be listed on the permit. As far as some of the specific guidance to applicants that is being developed as part of the application form, reinforcing the state requirements that site conditions do not allow businesses to accommodate, oh, apologize. Even though the state allows up to 50% of occupancy to be sort of accommodated via TOSSAs, we want to manage expectations and be clear that that's, it's not necessarily a guarantee that they can reach that full 50%, especially if site conditions are limited and constraining. And so making that clear is part of the application materials. Also that the, any furnishings with TOSSAs should be temporary in nature and should be easily removed once the TOSA is no longer valid. An important point about encouraging cooperation among neighbors. So if there are several businesses along a single blockface, we would communicate that that coordination is encouraged. If they all wanted to strategize together and expand, propose expanding use on the sidewalks and move pedestrians out into the travel lanes, those types of proposals are going to be most efficiently and easily reviewable by the county when there's cooperation. And so we'll be encouraging that. We spoke to the distinct case of rooftops and that they do not need to go through the TOSA process. Clear access to restroom facilities as for rooftop, rooftop areas as well, and design guidelines that speak to, you know, preserving pedestrian travel, considering a balance of public use, as well as how to best maintain ADA access, fire access, and et cetera. And with enforcement inspections, I will turn it over to Captain, Captain Rowley.
Thanks, Anthony. So for the enforcement piece, there's a, you know, pretty much four different departments. You got the police department, public health, the fire marshal's office, and code enforcement. Starting with this first bullet, failure to comply as a Class 1 misdemeanor. We're trying to educate and making sure everybody's in compliance and working well in order to open these restaurants. So we will have a piece of it from the police side, but the four of us, our agencies are going to have to work together. So when it comes to capacity, that's going to be something that the fire marshals will look at as far as outdoor seating. The permit should have on the outside should list the capacity for any approved outdoor seating, and that number won't be the same as what a rooftop might be. So if a rooftop per se has the capacity of 100, they're allowed to have 50 on the rooftop, but also have whatever the capacity is outside for any outdoor seating. Public health will play the enforcement piece as far as any health violations, and code enforcement as far as any violations of the permit itself, since that's going to be issued through the county. We are working closely with all four agencies to make sure that we're on the same page, and collectively will come up the best plan as far as enforcement goes. For inspections, business licenses will be approved up until December 31st of 2020. And any remodeling that's occurred during business closure must pass inspection before they commence any activity. That's it.
Thank you. So in addition to the information addressed previously, as applications are coming in, approved TOSSAs will be depicted on a mapping application that the county will stand up that will also be made available to the public. So this will be a feature that allows the general public to see where there are TOSSAs approved as another piece of information they may wish to consider when making decisions about dining out during Phase One. Staff is also exploring the possibility of adding in sort of pre-existing outdoor cafes to the mapping information as well, and so that could be another layer of dining options for consideration. Where appropriate, with Slide 22, I will turn it over to Hui to, to speak to issues of potential use of parking lanes.
Thank you, Anthony. So where appropriate, repurposing parking lanes may add flexibility to the TOSA permit. I have to remind everyone, and the business is very much aware, at the beginning of COVID-19 in late March and early April, we have quickly implemented the temporary pickup and drop-off zones in front of pretty much all of the restaurant that has a frontage along the streets. That was to support them continue their business with takeout service. These will be the same space that now could be a potential of assisting, expanding the outdoor seating area. So I think the key point here is we highly encourage the business and their neighbors to discuss and determine what is the best way of using that valuable piece of right-of-way. If you have it for pickup service, then you won't be able to use that for pedestrian bypass, because the mixture of those two are not safe. And if we want to use that for pedestrian bypass, we also need to think about the ADA accessibility routes. So there are certain ADA requirements that need to be met, which is why we're saying we're going to try to encourage a collaborated among neighbors application, preferably block by block. That would make it easier to implement and make it more practical and safer. Application that came in with the neighbors already agreed on a one option versus the other will be processed on a higher priority, because otherwise county will have to reach out to the neighboring business to figure out what is the best formation for each business and their neighbors. We also want to encourage sort of creative thinking of maybe move some of the pickup service to side streets, things like that. We will be working very closely with the restaurants, with the systems from AED and other business organization, trying to make sure the process and the, is rapid and the review is responsive.
Thank, thank you, Hui. So looking ahead to timeline, over the, over the past several days, we have pushed out interim updates and information to restaurants and businesses to let them know that more information will be coming, that we are now holding this, this county board meeting, recommending that the board amend its continuity of government operations or ordinance, and that over the next 24 hours or so, we will be finalizing sort of the mechanics of the application intake and review. The application form should be posted online no later than tomorrow. We will be creating a webpage that's sort of the, the host location for that application as well as other pertinent information. On Thursday at 11:00 a.m., there's a webinar scheduled, Arlington Restaurant Initiative and Business Community Stakeholders regarding, a lot of good information and guidance regarding Phase One. And on May 29th, Northern Virginia will enter Phase One. That appears to no longer be tentative. And so, you know, today's action and recommendation focuses primarily on restaurants and beverage services as it relates to the temporary outdoor seating areas. There's been ongoing discussion as well that there's a number of other use cases in Phase One that may be looking for and may benefit from regulatory flexibility. These will continue to receive additional attention, and we may be forthcoming back to the board through discussions for updates on these items as appropriate. And so to conclude the presentation, the county manager's recommendation is that the board adopt the proposed amendments to the continuity of government ordinance associated with the COVID-19 pandemic on an emergency basis, and then authorize advertisement of a public hearing at the June 2020 board meeting to consider final adoption of the proposed amendments. Thank you. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Have you got something you'd like to add before I go to maybe a motion and some questions and discussion?
The only thing I wanted to add, which is we're in the process of trying to stand up, and hopefully we'll have it in the next 24 to 48 hours. I'll call it a, we have a reporter problem app right now. We're going to do something similar to that so that people who have issues or complaints could actually go, you know, out there, use their phone to actually report it to that website, geolocate the location, and that will come to a group that will then handle it. Our, we're going to strongly encourage people to use that as a way to report any enforcement issues, instead of calling the ECC or our non-emergency police number. That also would be available, but that's something we're in the process of working out. That's the only thing I wanted to add.
Thank you. That's great. Colleagues, why don't we go ahead and get a motion on the table, and then we can have questions, discussion, but maybe just getting a motion there would be fine. Mr. Dorsey, I mean, think maybe you've got one for us? It's simple, I think.
Sure, Madam Chair. I'd like to move that the county board adopt the proposed amendments to the Arlington County continuity of governments, government ordinance associated with the COVID-19 pandemic on an emergency basis, and authorize that we advertise a public hearing on these amendments for the June 13th, 2020 county board meeting to consider final adoption of the proposed amendments that are contained in the staff report dated May 25th, 2020.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, colleagues. Moved and seconded. Mr. Dorsey, you want to kick us off with any discussion questions for staff?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just like to say to the somewhat question Mr. Fusarelli raised during the presentation as to whether or not the mapping software and program should contain not only existing outdoor cafes, in addition to the TOSSAs, I would strongly recommend that we include both of those as people are looking both of those as people are looking for what might be their dining options in one consolidated source, so long as we verify that those restaurants are actually still in operation and operating those cafes. I think that could be great value added to the community. And I'd like to just really commend the multi-departmental interdisciplinary work that has gone into putting this together. It seems really thoughtful. I recognize that trying to stand up a very robust and efficient regulatory regime in a matter of a few days requires a lot of creative thought, a lot of person hours, so I do appreciate all of that. I do have somewhat of a question, and I don't know who it should be directed to, but as it concerns coordination of neighboring adjacent restaurants, for example, in Clarendon, the need for them to collaborate on determining whether or not they seek to use a pedestrian bypass to replace the curbside pickup lane. So tell me a little bit more about how that works. If somebody puts in their application for TOSA, they want it, but, you know, really there's three or four other restaurants that need to be included in this to make that efficacious. How does that work with the plan to deliver a timely response to the TOSA application? Do we put it on them to coordinate, or do we actually play a role in making sure those conversations happen?
Let me start, and I think that the people who are best able to answer this might be Jill Hunger and Captain Rowling, who have already worked with some of the restaurants. We have reached out to them, and they can speak to the kind of collaboration that's going on there. Another person who could also provide some information is Ms. Wong, who can talk about, we've actually sent some people out to sort of map the sidewalks and find out places where we think it makes sense. But why don't I turn it over to you, Jill, first, and then over to Mike Rowling?
Come on. Yeah.
All right. I think we can hear you now, Ms. Hunger.
Great. Thank you. Some glitches here. With respect to this, I have done some outreach to our bids as well as our partnerships to see if they can also help to assist us or the restaurants in doing that. A lot of the concentrations of the restaurants are.
Ms. Hunger, we just lost you, I think.
I think he may be back on mute. Jill, you need to unmute yourself.
He's saying she can't. She's trying. There we go.
Trying, and I hope it doesn't go back again.
So far, so good. So back to the beginning, I think.
Certainly. So I've had some outreach with our bids and our partnerships. As you know, most of the concentration of our restaurants are in those areas, so they will be working with the restaurants there to help pull together almost something like a batch application in looking at entire block fronts. The other thing is I know that through ARI, police have had conversations with some of our restaurant owners as well, and Captain Rowling can fill you in a little bit more on that.
Thank you. Captain Rowling.
Yes. Thank you, Jill. So yeah, my team, ARI team, has been in communication with many of the restaurant owners already. We fielded a lot of questions, and, you know, if they are in a group and they can actually submit a group application, they all are in agreement. I think that may push their application a little bit more to the front, be a little bit easier for CPHD to review and approve, or for the manager to approve. That's our recommendation, but there are going to be many exceptions to that because several businesses are not going to be one size fit all. So we are kind of relaying that information. We're hosting an interactive webinar with AED on Thursday at 11 o'clock, and we have a panel of five members from the various departments that are going to do a presentation and then kind of answer any questions that the businesses may have. So hopefully we can field a lot of those questions there as they submit their application. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I, yeah, and if I also could ask Hui to take a minute and explain some of the reconnaissance we've done on some of the blocks?
Yes, because the layout of our blocks and the parking lanes are different. For example, there are certain blocks that has parking lanes on both left and right side. So basically, next to the median, there's a parking lane, and next to the curb, there's another one. In that kind of formation, it's easier to keep both the takeout service and to use the parking lane for pedestrian bypass. So those are the easiest scenarios. We have identified a couple locations in the county that has that potential. And also, when we say we prefer block by block, depends on the block length and depends on the length of the frontage of certain restaurants. If a restaurant has a longer frontage and they actually want a different formation, I will say it is doable with a little bit more complication, but it's doable. For example, they may need to find a way to provide temporary ADA ramps so that pedestrian can safely hop off the curb and then go back, you know, from 50 feet down the road. So those are the additional, I will say, requirements that needed, and we will work with the business to find an easy way to implement those. So it's not necessary to say if it's not the entire block, then it's a no. There could be a different formation that may work. What we will do is we will do a diligent field evaluation to make sure it is practical, it is safe, and it is not adding additional burden onto the business because that's going to be the purpose of it.
All right. Mr. Dorsey, any other questions?
Thank you. Yeah, and just a quick follow-up on that. So it is conceivable, even though we're going to direct all parties to try and work out a comprehensive solution, it is conceivable that you could find businesses that have been sustainable enough during this period with their curbside activities and their delivery activities that could opt to retain that and then leaving other businesses without a viable TOSA application because their neighbors are not willing to go along. And so that's potentially something that could happen, even though we're going to try and facilitate that it doesn't. Got it.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Other questions, colleagues, or comments?
Sure, Madam Chair. On the same topic, and I really appreciate Mr. Dorsey's questions and the really fulsome answer from all of our different departments, because I have the same ones. I think it's largely been answered about the circumstances Mr. Dorsey was just drilling into, which is how likely is it that a restaurant would be denied the opportunity to have outdoor seating because its neighbors wish to keep the dedicated pickup and drop-off lane? And it certainly sounds like our staff are going to be working really hard to try to come up with an alternative for nearly every circumstance, and of course, first and foremost, encouraging and supporting them and working with one another. I guess one of the things I would find helpful, I know a lot of times when we think about the restaurant industry in Arlington, you know, the mind goes directly to the Clarendons of the world. But could you help us give us an understanding based on your reconnaissance that was alluded to earlier about what share of our restaurants are going to be in this situation of having a trade-off between outdoor dining and the pickup and drop-off relative to the share of restaurants that may have, you know, the sort of more suburban style of an onsite parking lot? How extensive might this issue of the conflicts between pickup, drop-off, and outdoor dining be? I'm not sure who that's directed to. Maybe Ms. Wong.
Yeah, Ms. Wong.
Okay. I can use our experience when we set up the temporary pickup, drop-off zone. We have received a little less than 400 requests from restaurants, so that's a little less than 400 restaurants. And while we evaluate, we have implemented about 200 poodle zones. And not, one zone does not necessarily associate with just one restaurant. It could be, you know, a row of them. But we did find some of the restaurants already have a private parking lot. So for those conditions, we did not assign the poodle zone on the curbside for them. And then there are some restaurant that does not have a parking lane in front of their business, but we were able to find, like for a few of them, we were able to find across the street there are parking spaces which we would allow them to do the pickup. So I will say, based on the poodle zone application, it's less than 50% of them actually have private parking space. Of course, the ones who know they have parking space, they don't need it, didn't come in to apply.
Right.
So this is not necessarily a scientific number, but the applications we received, we have less than 50, about 40% that we did not, we were not able to provide them a poodle zone because we found they have actually alternative. I will say, similar to the poodle zone, in this TOSA application, we would highly encourage business to actually look into the privately owned spaces before they have to encroach into public space, especially the public accessibility space. For example, some restaurant may not have a parking lot, but they may have one parking lot from neighboring business that's not necessarily using it too much because of teleworking. They may be able to form some kind of agreement to use those spaces. Those are much safer to use, much safer to manage, and it's easier to coordinate than, you know, just look at, oh, now I need to open up my door and just look at the sidewalk in front of me. I will say that may not be the most practical and option, and it may take a little bit longer to get it set up. So I will be participating in that webinar with the businesses on Thursday as well. We're going to try to talk them through and try to encourage them find the best practical way to expand their outdoor seating.
That's really helpful, and I think in the way you've articulated it, it's pretty clear that if we can nudge our businesses to come up with an alternative to the public right-of-way, particularly the sidewalk, that will be for the better. For those who can, or maybe even for those who do have seating perhaps, for example, in a lot, but still have the frontage on a public sidewalk, what do we do about queuing? If restaurants are at 50% capacity, we assume they're counting heads about who's going in, who's coming out, if there are people waiting outside. How do we ensure that there's not crowding on our sidewalks, particularly if they are being used for dining as well?
Probably Captain Rowling question, maybe. I don't know. Hui? Captain Rowling.
Yeah, so we'll educate our businesses to try to make sure that they're keeping their six feet for distance, for social distancing, doing the best that they can, and possibly maybe even take reservations or numbers. So that's something that we can push out to try to prevent that from happening. We noticed that something like this did happen over Cinco de Mayo, so we're trying to learn from that. So we will speak with the restaurants, and especially on Thursday, and kind of push that message out. If you can take a reservation, great. The other option might be, the restaurants may want to put a time limit on the amount of time they can stay, so maybe one hour per reservation. That way they have enough time for some turnover and proper cleaning, and that way maybe we can prevent the lines from forming and do what's best for everybody. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any more questions, Ms. Crystal?
No.
All right. Mr. De Franti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question, first, just the amount of work and the context for what is being done to try to adjust to phase one, I really, really appreciate. And this is outdoor seating at 50% capacity and takeout. So, you know, I think it's just important to emphasize that for our folks listening in, this is not going in to dine in at a restaurant. That's not phase one. So that's just, that's a context thought. And then the only, the question I have is a little, I think it's for Mr. Schwartz, it's about the coming month. We're advertising here, and then we're going, we would reconsider this in June. And as far as, it's a tremendous amount of work. The more I worked through it, the more I read the staff report and the proposal, it makes a ton of sense to me, but I didn't know if you had any thoughts with respect to process on this between now and the June meeting.
So thank you for that question. So part of what we're trying to do is hit a sweet spot here so that, and I don't think we're going to be able to, I want to adjust expectations that everybody at Friday at 6:00 a.m. is not going to have a sign-off from us to go ahead and put, you know, put what they want out in the street. Our goal is to hopefully have a very quick turnaround, and again, the people who have private property, it's easier for them, get that up and running and tweaked. And to the extent that we need to make any further adjustments to the ordinance, we would bring that back to the board on June 13th. The other piece of this, which is really an unknown, is what happens about moving potentially from phase one into phase two? And I'm not going to suggest that I know when or if that will happen, but if it does, one of the criteria likely to be available there is for indoor dining, which then would create even more pressure, I think, on that curb space because people will want to be able to park in a space where there is now pickup, drop-off, and potentially pedestrians. So those are some of the things that we'll be paying close attention to between now and the board meeting.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Manager. And the other question I have is, one of Mr. Fusarelli's last slides was on the other areas besides dining and next steps. And so, Madam Chair, I'll go ahead to that question and just say, there's a tremendous amount of work that's happened between last week and today. While folks were on Memorial Day, you got the glory of being working a lot. So, but on the other topics, do you have any sense, can you signal to us over the coming days on, you know, the other big buckets of farmer's market, retail, those sorts of questions? Will we be hearing more?
Right. On those areas, the governor has laid out in his safer-at-home phase one guidelines, a number of mandatory criteria in each of those areas. We will make sure they're up on our website. I'm hard-pressed, except perhaps maybe with farmer's markets, to think that Arlington County has anything specific to add to the criteria that were laid out there. So if there is something on farmer's markets, we will push that out in the next day or two. But on the other ones, for example, when it comes to religious institutions, you know, holding services, I think that there are some criteria laid out there, and it would not be, you know, we do not want the government coming into the congregation and saying how to hold your service. Also, for the exercise establishments, they'll be able to do things outdoors, but I think that's laid out in the governor's criteria. So I don't think we'll be coming back with any additional amendments to the ordinance in the next week or so.
Great. Thank you. That's all I had as questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I actually, I have a certain number of questions, so I'll ask them. I think most of them are maybe quickly answered, and I invite my colleagues to kind of signal me if you want to discuss any of these. Just want to verify, the governor's order is May 29, I think, at midnight, which means effectively things are open Friday, correct?
Yes.
Yep. Just double-checking. And I also want to support what Mr. Dorsey suggested, to add the pre-existing outdoor dining to that map. I think that's a really, that's a really good idea. How, I know previously, if we wanted to stop a restaurant from operating because they were not beginning to observe the guidelines, this is way early, it was a very cumbersome process and took quite a while and a lot of personnel. Does that still obtain here, or because this is an emergency ordinance and we're giving them a special temporary, can we decide a lot faster if someone, even despite the warnings, is really just not doing what they need to, that we can remove this for them pretty quickly? Is that the case?
Yeah, that is the case, but if I could ask the county attorney to speak to that, because he and I have had several conversations about that.
Thank you. Mr. McIsaac?
Yes, Madam Chairman. I think that what Captain Rowland talked about earlier is definitely true, which is there needs to be coordination among law enforcement and public health in particular. But I think the most effective way to deal with a restaurant that's not complying is by public health revoking the certificates and licenses they have for operation of a restaurant, and that would have an immediate effect on them. So that, I think, is what is at least a tentative way to approach this with an immediate impact.
Question for you, because it was my understanding that you Question for you, because it was my understanding that we couldn't do that immediately, that that had to be observed one day, had to be returning with a warning, had to return the next day and observe it again and give a citation and return again later before it could act, so that it was a long, drawn-out process to actually revoke the license. Maybe I was misunderstanding, or is that still the case?
Yeah, I mean, Captain Rowling may be able to fill in, but my understanding is that that stair-step approach, if you will, is designed to achieve compliance, but I don't believe it's required.
Thank you. Captain Rowling?
Yeah, that is correct. It's about education instead of enforcement, and that's what we're trying to do, to educate them. But we will work closely, if we, the police observe a violation, we will notify the proper authority, whether it be fire marshals, again, for capacity, or if it's a public health issue, we'll contact public health, or maybe even code enforcement, if there's some kind of violation of the permit that the county approves. Just very similar to like a noise ordinance, right? Something like that, so.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartz?
Yeah, one thing I did want to add, I think that under the terms of the ordinance that you're adopting, my signature is required to authorize the use, and I think I can take it away very quickly. It is not my goal to, you know, put a restaurant in a hardship situation if they, on an occasion, there's one or two more people sitting out there than there should be. But also, there are other situations at the far end of the scale where a restaurant absolutely is flaunting what's going on. In other words, doesn't even pretend to even apply, let alone follow, the information that's going to be on the placard. And I will tell you that in those sort of egregious cases, that I'm not going to have a lot of sympathy in those cases, and the stepwise approach probably will be one step.
Thank you, that's exactly what I wanted to hear. I think most of our establishments are really working really hard. I, you know, would like to, you know, kudos to our businesses, because they are working very hard with us, and many of them really doing very, very well, but there are a few exceptions, and I'm glad to hear we can, you know, come down hard on them if that's warranted. Does somebody else have another question? I'm going to keep going, I have a couple more, but if anyone wants to discuss this at all, please let me know. Okay. Mr. Schwartz, on the placard, I think there's a question for you, who makes the placard? Who, I mean, is there a set thing, a design, a template online that they have to print out or something? And then can they open up and start without that placard? Is that kind of like, if the placard's out there, they're good to go? Could you discuss that a little bit?
Yeah, so I'm going to let Anthony Fusorelli of the Community Placard and Housing answer that.
Okay, Mr. Fusorelli.
All right, thank you. So the discussions about how the placard will be created and who will create it are ongoing, but I think what is likely to occur is that with the approval, you know, the planning division working in coordination with the manager's office, we would have sort of a placard, an electronic placard that gets generated. And then that placard could then be emailed to the applicant, easily printed, sort of protected with, you know, plastic sleeves. And I think the directions will be for those placards to then be posted visibly onsite at the temporary outdoor seating area. The application form itself will also have information and guidance in terms of a diagram that needs to be provided to actually go through the review process. So there's two kind of two, there's two pieces, there's the diagram that is being submitted as part of the application that staff will review, and then what comes out on the other end will then be sort of the approved placard that then gets sent back to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz, anything you'd add?
Yeah, we're also going to aim, I think, this is Anthony's suggestion, that it be on a standard size of paper, like 11 by 17.
Right, it's in that sleeve, I got it, yeah.
I think everybody has a printer, and they can just print it out and post it and protect it with plastic so it doesn't get rained on, but, and it'll still, it will also be available to people, hopefully, with this map we have, as people go by, they'll be able to pull up the same information.
Excellent. Well, it gets rained on, they can just print it out again, so this is, this sounds great. This makes me think, I don't want to give anybody more work, because it's an incredible, the lift and the effort that everybody's, is absolutely amazing. I think the webinar for our businesses and stakeholders is great. I'm finding myself, Mr. Manager, thinking that we might consider a webinar for our residents, a little bit about what they can expect, what they should see, in other words, sort of the same information but geared towards our public, because they're going to have a lot of questions about this and about face, you know, face coverings and things. And so if there's a way we can get, think about getting that out as well, that would be great, but I know that's a heavy lift, I'm sorry.
That might be an excellent topic for Friday's Town Hall.
Absolutely, and we can record it and maybe just form a video from that, thank you. Last question, it's almost rhetorical, but I guess, Mr. Manager, this is for you, or maybe for our officer, is it a good idea to be selling alcohol at 6:00 in the morning that people can drink outside in one of these toses?
It's not a good idea, and I would say that because that is the broadest outline, is we could permit it at 6:00 AM, I think that we're going to give some consideration to actually having a starting time probably more like 11 o'clock, but I, we haven't figured that out. I'm going to let Captain Rowling weigh in on that, too.
Okay, Captain Rowling.
Yeah, so I think that 6:00 came from ABC in reference to what they're permitting, right? So our application, if submitted through Arlington County was approved, then they can turn around and go to ABC and ask for their approval to serve and consume alcohol in these toses now. I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember the rest of the question.
So the question is, so when they do that, I'll even follow up here. It's just, I'm anxious that we don't have people thinking that
Too early.
With a TOSA at 6:00 in the morning, and I don't, I hate to be all granny-state about it, but it just doesn't feel good to me to have that.
No, no, we don't necessarily need to approve alcohol being consumed at 6:00 in the morning, but the restaurants, depending on the restaurant, may want to be open earlier for breakfast for outside, for example. So if the county wanted to limit, it appears reading the Order 61 that they have the permission to restrict which hours they wish to go with. So if the county was to say, like the county manager mentioned, 11:00 AM, and that's what we approved as a county, then if that application was submitted to ABC, ABC would then support, 11:00 would be the start time.
Okay, great, and that makes sense. I could see maybe brunches, you've got one of the mimosas and Bloody Marys and things. I mean, I assume if there's some egregious problems with this stuff, then we can treat it on an individual basis as well. Yeah, okay, I see, head nods. I think that is all I had for the moment. Wow, we're moving fast and we've done a lot. I really, really am impressed, and I'm sure we'll get feedback on this. Colleagues, anything more to add at this point before we vote?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just a final comment, which is a thank you to the staff team that has pulled together a pretty extraordinary set of regulatory amendments that really changes in how we generally do business on a temporary basis, and thank them very much. And I want to just particularly note that I don't think this would be at all possible if not for the work and the foundation that has been laid over the past few years, really, between the Arlington Restaurant Initiative and our restaurant and bar business in Arlington, between economic development and their team, and the outreach that they've provided to small businesses, and between CPHD and many of those restaurants and operators as well. So I know that if those relationships didn't already exist, you all wouldn't have been able to do, again, I love that word, reconnaissance, the reconnaissance you've been doing, wouldn't be able to broker those relationships and decisions among restaurant operators that may be sharing a block, and certainly wouldn't be able to execute this as safely and, we hope effectively, as I think we're positioned to do. So a real thanks, not only for the work over the past few weeks, but frankly, the work over the past few years.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Crystal. Colleagues, any other comments?
Sure, Madam Chair, just want to echo the thanks for Mr. Fusorelli, Captain Rowley, Ms. Wang, and Ms. Hunger, and also the manager for bringing this forward. It is a ton of work. The only other thought I have is context. I think that we've jumped right into the details of this, and I do think, you know, if you read the 22 pages that the governor has in Phase One, we are not going from Phase Zero to fully open. We are, I do think that at least the dimmer, you know, a light dimmer where you just take a tiny click and open up just a little bit, is, if you look at all those 22 pages, and we'll get into them in the Facebook Town Hall, we're just going a short distance here. And because of that, restaurants and all the other different types of businesses have different rules that apply, but what's being done here is going to help with a lot of compliance to make sure that we are being safe as we slowly move forward and safely move forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. DeFranti. Mr. Dorsey, any comments? You're muted, you're muted, but I think you're saying no.
Thank you, Madam Chair, apologize for that. I would just like to add an encouragement to my colleagues, Ms. Crystal, Mr. DeFranti, that in addition to going through Phase One from A to Z, that you also incorporated discussion on the governor's orders on face coverings in public. So you should have a robust Friday afternoon Town Hall.
Looking forward to it. It's going to be busy, and as you all heard me say, we got questions about that this morning with the press about what if the governor orders, and I said, I don't care in some ways what the governor does, everybody should be wearing a face covering, so we'll be doing a lot of talking about that, thank you. I think that's it, I think we're ready for a vote. I do just want to say, Mr. Manager, you know, I have often wondered, and actually all of us, I have wondered, can government in the 21st century move as nimbly as it has to in this technological era? And, boy, I think maybe we are. Not only is this organization moving nimbly, but you did it with a cross-departmental team. I mean, that's just really impressive. I just thank you so much, everybody, for the work, and I'm sure this last Memorial Day weekend was not very restful for a whole lot of folks, but we got a lot done, and that's maybe all in the spirit of Memorial Day and what we can do for our country and for our residents. Thank you. Mr. Schwartz?
I'm sure this is what you had in mind when you talked about innovation and resilience in the beginning of January, so.
Yeah, sort of, it's absolutely what I had in mind, I just doesn't want to think it was applying to a pandemic. I thought it was going to be a little more fun and a little easier. Thank you. All right, colleagues, I think we're ready to vote. All in favor of the motion before us, please say aye. Mr. DeFranti?
Aye.
Ms. Crystal?
Aye.
Mr. Dorsey?
Aye.
Ms. Garvey?
Aye.
All right, motion passes 4-0. Thank you all very much. Mr. Manager, anything more for the good of the order today?
No, except I did want to mention that at about 1:30 today, we were full up, we had 1,000 people go through the testing, and I'll have a report back to you on that. We'll try to make information public on sort of what happened over the next day or so.
That's great. And any idea when we might get a sense of if there's going to be another one of these events? I've been saying constantly, this needs to be a regular thing, but I don't know that we have another one scheduled, right?
And I'm not, I can't make a prediction on that yet, but we'll let you know.
Thank you very much. All right, colleagues, any more? Good to the order? No? All right. Ms. Jacob, anything more to come before the board?
No, there is not.
All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, stay well. Thank you.